Santa Barbara Planning Commission hearing for Santa Barbara County Planning Commission hearing for September 13, 2023. Please join me for the flag salute.
Flag salute to the Suba flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of the Church of San. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Castro, will you please make the TV coverage announcement and then conduct the roll call?
Sounds good. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB TV Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Cove, Longhoke, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orchid areas. We broadcasted the planning commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB TV Channel 20. This hearing will also be streamed live on CSB TV and will be available for download in a day or two.
Right.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Brayley? Brayley?
Right. Think of like bride, beautiful bride.
Thank you. Yes, here.
Commissioner Purdy?
You're here.
Commissioner, Chair Park?
I'm here.
And for the record, I believe Commissioner Martinez is just running a little late today.
Okay. And let's have the agenda status report, Mr. Wilson.
Good morning, Chair members of the Commission. Regardless of our agenda today, there is two items that are on our standard agenda. However, the first item, there's been a request submitted by the applicant to continue that item to December, and staff will be able to provide that information at that time. And then the second item is a continuance of a cannabis appeal in the Carpinteria area, many edibles, and staff and the applicants and consultants are ready to present on that item today. And that is the standard agenda, and I can leave the projection report, Mr. Chair.
Please do.
So our next scheduled hearing is going to be on September 27th. And that will be here in the Santa Maria, and that is a follow-up for the workshop that was held at the end of last month for the ordinance and policy amendments for the related to the Recreation Master Plan. Again, that's September 27th here in Santa Maria. Following that, our next hearing will be October 4th in there's two items on that, a telecom and then a ordinance package from Long Range Planning Division. There's a number of ordinance amendments that will be presented to the Planning Commission for review and consideration at that time. One thing to note on October 4th is that there was a conflict with scheduling this room on that date, and so we will be in Santa Barbara. However, we will be located in the Santa Barbara County Employee Retirement Offices in Goleta, and we will be providing that address to the commissioners to attend. So that's going to be a different location because the hearing room is still going through the audiovisual updates in Santa Barbara. So.
Just show me where the flag is. So I'd point in the right direction.
So we'll be sending out that information to the Commission prior to the October 4th date. Just it's going to be a little different because we'll be in Goleta, having that hearing. And then on October 11th, we'll be back in Santa Maria. There's two items on that. These are, there's an appeal of a homestay application, and then there's a development agreement that will be brought to the Planning Commission for review and consideration on that date. Moving further into October, we will have, on October 25th, we have a appeal of a cannabis project in the Longhoke area. And then November 1st, presently, we have no items projected for that date. We are anticipating that we may be returning back to Santa Barbara at that time, and they may be starting to do audiovisual upgrades into this hearing room. So beginning in November, we may be holding all of our hearings in Santa Barbara until this room is completed. So when we get further information, we'll update the Planning Commission on that. So that concludes the projection report. And wait, there's one other item on there. I'm sorry. November 8th is the agricultural enterprise ordinance, and that's, we have it projected being in the Santa Barbara hearing room. Sorry, I overlooked that. That was kind of important.
Okay, so the November 8th one, would it be like really Santa Barbara, or this would be Goleta again, or what?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. It'll be really Santa Barbara. So that's what we're hearing, and then from the General Services Division or Department, we'll be back in Santa Barbara on November 8th in the hearing room in Santa Barbara.
Okay, well, I guess that makes sense with our scheduling. That item, I would expect to see a lot more North County people wanting to appear than South County. Too bad it couldn't be in North County. Okay, one thing I don't see here that I thought I used to see was we were going to have a hearing on the environmental justice plan. Did I call it right? Yeah. And whatever happened to that? I'm not complaining. I'm just curious about it. It was actually going to be today first.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to give you a heads up that there were a couple of things that we needed to work on on that document, and we're working with the CEO's office on it, so it will be rescheduled.
Do you think it'll be this year?
I do.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody else have questions of Secretary Wilson on the projection report or even the agenda status report? And let's go ahead to public comment, and this is for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda today. We limit it to 15 minutes total. We've never come anywhere close to that. And I ask that anybody's going to make public comment, follow our usual restriction to keep your comment to three minutes or less. Do we have anybody here in the room for public comment? I don't see anyone who's a human anyway. And then do we have anybody on the phone or online?
Chair Park, we do not have anybody in audience today. We do have Anna Correo on Zoom that has reached her hand.
Oh, okay. Well, let's go ahead.
She actually just lowered her hand.
Lower her hand.
She, um.
You.
Anna Correo?
Yes. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing the, I just was online with your department because I don't have any visuals. Not that you need to see me, but I'm not seeing anybody at the meeting. So I just wanted to let you know. Good morning, Chair Park and fellow commissioners. I would like to inform the Planning Commission of the concern, my concerns and the history regarding the withdrawal of the application for an updated odor abatement system for 4505 Foothill Road, CP1, which was supposed to be heard today also. The property was granted their CDP, da-da-da, 214, 2020 with an OAP dated 10/14/2019. On February 14th, 20, the CDP was then appealed by the Coalition. The PC Appeal Meeting was to be heard by the Planning Commission on October 7th, 2020. The City of Carpinteria on October 5th, 20, wrote an 11-page letter outlining the city's concerns regarding their OAP, limited parking, 11 spaces for 50 employees, and landscaping. These issues and others would have been addressed at the October 7th, 20 PC Appeal Meeting, but since the appeal was withdrawn, the concerns were never heard for nor responded to. The Coalition withdrew their appeal, and this appeal was then dropped from the standard agenda, though at the meeting on October 7th, it was initially to be considered continued till December 9th, 20. On 12/20/22, CPI then submitted a revised OAP. On January 4th of 23, a new CDP was issued, and appeal was filed January 17th of 23 by concerned carpentarians for the inadequate OAP. On August 24th, 23 concerned carpentarians was notified that CP1's application for their new CDP was withdrawn, so the appeal, the new appeal was removed from the 913 PC Agenda. The OAP that is now in effect is one that was written October 14th, 2019, almost four years ago. This property is one of five cannabis projects near Carpinteria High School, and possibly now the only one not being required to install regenerative carbon scrubbers. I figured that the property is about 11 30 feet away from Carpinteria High School's property line, and that there are close to 100 residents living on numerous streets to reside within 1,000 feet at CP, of CP1. This project was the one across the street, 4532, still producing cannabis malodors. 4532 was heard on appeal to the PC on June 1st, 22, and was then required to install internal greenhouse odor scrubbers within 12 months. 4532 submitted a new OAP, May 25th of 23, under a new number, and I have checked, it's still under review. Yesterday, the planner wrote me that they have asked the operator to show the location of the new scrubbers from the new IEP, or the new OAP submitted, May 26th of 23. Tristan Strauss, the operator and CEO, CEO of CP1, helped negotiate and agreed and signed the contract with the Coalition for Responsible Cannabis on August 20th of 21 with the model OAP and the four-tier system with the expectation that all the 25 signers would eventually install regenerative carbon scrubbers, but this is not being done on this property nor many others. In conclusion, I wanted to let the current Planning Commissioner and Commission know that though this cannabis operation at 4505 Road, Foothill Road, has been appealed twice, current county regulations do not provide a means for the public to suggest changes once the CDP is granted and withdrawals of the appeal and/or application have occurred. There needs to be some way that the county can enforce the use of best available control technology. Back from 218, Appendix F is not the same as back in 23, even though the renewal process of the annual business license is supposed to address odor concerns. This has not occurred yet, even for the operation at 3561 Foothill Road, which continues to elicit odors and dying landscaping. 3651's annual business license has already been renewed twice, even after receiving numerous odor complaints. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have comments or questions relating to this?
Okay.
I hope not because it's not agendized, so. Let's, let's go on to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Does anyone have anything they want to report on that's going on in their district or elsewhere? Okay, then. Oh, there you are. Let's go on to the minutes. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes? This would be the minutes for August 30, 2023, which was a workshop, so I'm not sure what we'd comment on, but.
This is a very simple set of minutes, so I apologize. I emailed these to the commissioners yesterday. This one had a chance to work on them, so they are very simple. If you want to take the time to look at them, otherwise, you know, staff's fine if you want to continue them to another date.
Mr. Chair, I did take the time this morning. I didn't see them yesterday, but they are straightforward, and I didn't find any reason to amend them. Okay, thank you. Will that lead to a motion then?
That was coming next.
Okay, I don't want to hurry you.
Motion to approve the minutes of the hearing of August 30, 2023.
Thank you. And let's see. We don't have Mr. Martinez, but he's not appearing remotely, so we don't need a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried.
That, I believe that is an abstention from Commissioner Frehening.
Sure. Thank you.
You're not even going to tell us about your trip on the informational report? Okay, well. Oh, well, that the runner was from your district. So, okay, you had a question, Commissioner Brayley?
I'm sorry, just, I didn't catch this, but on, on, on the continuance item on today's agenda that we just covered is, do we need a motion for that because it's a recommended action on the staff memo? If we don't on the Verizon?
That, that's on the standard agenda and item one, and we will get to that.
Okay.
We'll need a motion. We'll do the whole, the whole routine.
I got it.
And I actually have a few questions about that.
Okay.
So. I know you're eager, but first we're going to do the director's report. And Ms. Plowman was somewhere in cyberspace a few minutes ago, so can you rejoin us?
I'm back.
Good.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Today I have a brief report for you. Again, just a couple reminders. I'm reminding you every week about the Planning Commissioners Association, just in case you're interested and have forgotten. That is in, on October 6th and 7th in Toolumee County. And then, of course, the APA Conference, which is coming up next week, which bill, which will be the 18th through the 20th in Fresno. Also, the Ag Enterprise Ordinance Comment Period on the Draft Programmatic EIR is closing tomorrow, so if people are listening and interested, that is the deadline for written comments. And then I wanted to let the Planning Commission know that we are in the process of wrapping up our revisions to the housing element, and we expect to be posting the revised document after our work with the state. We've been working with them since the end of June on responding to their comments and making sure that we're adequately responding them, responding to them with the hopes of having no or very minimal administrative comments in this next round of review. So we will probably be but we will be posting this week, and then it has to post for seven days for public review, and then following that seven days, we will be submitting it to the state. And then they have 60 days to review it.
Now, how does that fit in with the February 15 deadline for rezones for next year, and then our hearing schedule for hearing the housing element first?
Right. So it's, it's all sort of depends on how quickly the state moves. We are, our plan is to have the Planning Commission hear the housing element document first, and then consider the rezones second.
Right.
So we are, you know, we've been working sort of behind the scenes to try and prepare for adoption hearings, but we are, we, we have to rely on the state to give us the go-ahead to do that. So we're doing the best we can to try and make sure that we can get everything done by that February 15th deadline, but it's getting tight, as you've observed.
Well, I have a suggestion, and that is it, it sounds like we're going to have some very important hearings, and a lot of them in the holiday period or January, the holiday recovery period. And I don't know if our normal calendar will, will accommodate that. And, and, and so I'm thinking maybe we'll need some special hearings. And we might start talking about the spacing of those, you know, whether they're two days in a row or however, and, and when they would be, and just making sure that enough planning commissioners are, are, are present.
Right. It's, that's a good comment, Mr. Chair. And in fact, if you recall, on the Exxon Trucking Project, we had two hearings in one week.
Yes.
And we're going to do, we would like to do something similar with the housing element adoption, and then also with the rezones, so that we can give the Planning Commission and the public enough hearings, but do it in a compressed timeframe so that we can move the items onto the board. I, I'd like to work with the secretary and you to see if we can identify some dates, and then maybe we can discuss those with the rest of the commission next week, if that would work.
Well, in two weeks, that'll be our next hearing is.
Oh, okay, two weeks. Okay.
But I, I think that's a great idea because folks will be scheduling the holiday events, and, and they can schedule around it, or we can schedule around what they've already done, but we, we just don't want to be surprised with scheduling problems, anyway.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, I interrupted you. Why don't you go ahead with the rest of your report? I'm sorry.
And then the other, just the other items I have are the future board actions. And we have the Los Forest Pipeline Appeal, so that was the ownership change on 9/19, so that's next week. And then we have the Guariti Garage Appeal, which was in Isla Vista, and that will be heard on October 17th. We have the Shopping Center ADU Ordinance Amendments on 11/28. And I believe there is an item on Mr. Wilson. There is another item on the 10th, and I am not recalling what it is. But I can tell you in one minute, if you'd give it to me. One second. Let's see, October 10th, we have Wind Energy Strauss, I'm sorry, Strauss Wind Energy is on the 3rd of October. That appeal, and then I think that is it, actually. Yeah. Yep. So happy to answer any questions.
Oh, was there a board meeting this week?
There was a board meeting this week. It was yesterday, and we just had a minor item on there that had to do with rehiring Eric Snyder to help us with building inspections because we are missing a staff person. We're down a staff person, and, and one of our supervisors has gone out on extended leave for, so we needed some additional help, and the board approved that.
Okay, excellent. Okay, does anyone else have questions of Ms. Plowman on the director's report? Then let's move to the next item. And I don't actually remember one of these before or know what to do. The way of public hearing, do we need any kind of action from the Planning Commission other than to ask, did you get any objections that we need to consider?
Mr. Chair, that, that's correct. There's no action by the commission. It's only noticing purposes. We can move to the standard agenda.
Okay, and so there were, you didn't receive any objections by the 14th or whatever?
So it's noticing, so they would contact us in that timeline?
Yeah. Okay, well, then let's move to the standard agenda. Will you read the first item into the record, Ms. Castro?
Yes, I'm hearing, hearing to consider the following appeals. Case number 23 APL 00024 by appellant Ron Eckerson to consider an appeal of the Planning and Development Director's decision to approve the project, case number 22 DVP 5000023, and case number 23 APL 00026 by appellant Verizon Wireless to consider the applicant's appeal of the South Board Agricultural Review as far preliminary design review denial of case number 19 BAR 50000222, and to determine the project is exempt from the previous of sequel pursuant to state guidance, section 15303.
Okay. Do we have any ex-party contacts or site visits to report from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, yes, I actually spoke several times with Sarah Erickson, the appellant, about her neighborhood and the alternatives that the applicant had tried to process through different boards and tried to have a meeting with the Verizon folks, but that has been delayed, so that's it.
Okay, anyone else? I, I had an exchange of emails about setting up a Zoom conference with Verizon folks, but that was not consummated, so to speak, because of the request for continuance. Okay, well, let's have our staff report on what the status of this is.
Morning, Chair and Commissioner. Oh, sorry.
Take it away, Willow.
Hi, I'm Willow. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a continuance to the December 6, 2023 Planning Commission hearing for additional time to address topics that were expressed by the community with respect to design and location. Verizon and the county have mutually agreed to extend the shot clock until December 20th, 2023 to accommodate the request. As such, staff recommends the item be continued to the December 6, 2023 hearing.
Okay, I, I have some questions, but I want to let other commissioners say what they have to say first. Anybody? Okay. So as often occurs, I'm confused here. Is this to consider, the, the hearing on the 6th, is it to consider other potential locations? Is, is that what's going on? Is, is Horizon's going to take another look at potential locations, or are we going to talk more about the color of the poll, or what are we going to be talking about that's different than we would have done today? Anybody know?
Mr. Chair, I was going to jump in here. So we do have the applicant on, online as well. Ms. Knight is available, so, and she has her hand raised, so she may have some more background details about what exactly the applicant team is going to look at, but essentially what's been submitted to PND so far is just this location. There have been other locations that the staff has looked at, but what's been included in the current package that's before the Planning Commission is just this, this location at this time. So any, any new locations that are proposed, staff would have to look at and review prior to returning in December.
So how, how would we do that if we're not having a hearing until December, or I guess we could do it today?
So, so no other locations are proposed at this time, and SAP has not had a chance to review any new locations. So if the applicant team does decide between now and December that they, there are new locations that they would like to review, and they would like to submit, they would have to submit that to staff. Staff would then complete our review. We would circulate that to different departments. We'd have to complete new noticing for that, and then it would return to the Planning Commission with a new analysis of the new location.
Chair Park, that wouldn't happen by December 6th.
Yeah, that's what I.
This one would just kind of go away for a while, if that's the scenario.
Because procedurally, what needs to occur if there's another location selected by, by Verizon to, 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 to apply for, then it, it, it'll result in staff review and then a director's determination, right? I mean, we, we don't get it on, on on a first look. We, what we're getting are, are appeals of a director's determination. Am I correct?
That, that is yeah, yeah, so that, that is correct. This project is on appeal. However, if it's, if it's a modification of the location to a, a, you know, similar, similar spot not too far away, this is all within the right of way, so I, I, I think that we would move forward with this on, on the appeal, as, as it's currently appealed.
Right. Well, unless Verizon is considering, after a discussion with neighborhood people of, of, of another location. After a discussion with neighborhood people of, of an, of another location. And, and it, and it gets back to my original question, we're, we're going to be waiting. Close to, am I counting right, three months to consider an appeal. On the same pole that's in front of us today, because there's no. Procedural way in which to make it another pole in the meantime. Uh, so I get to wondering, oh, what's to be negotiated or dealt with? And, and, and what's got me rambling about this, and I, pardon me, but I am, I'm, I'm hoping that discussing some of this procedure ahead of time will make it easier on the six. Is um. I hearken back to, I think it was twenty-twenty when we first had this, which is three years ago. And Commissioner Bridley and I. Uh, took a long walk, I mean, we, we used a couple of hours with residents of the Island Vista area, and we looked at every single potential pole. And we had a really good Verizon team out there with us that was giving us tons of information. And, and we, we kind of graded the different pole locations. And then even came up with some ideas for, and, 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 you know, a, another one that was an under consideration. Uh, and uh, I, I recall, for example, um. That we did look at a pole that was next to an empty lot, and I'm presuming that's the Sabado Tarday location that was. Referred to in the staff report. Um, and we talked about. You know, logical things since so much of the cellphone traffic was going to be people residing on UCSB property with the different housing projects there. And then there was more open space for a pole, that that might be the logical location, and I think Verizon was going to look into that. Um, uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm somewhat surprised, I was somewhat surprised to read in the staff report. Uh, that Verizon did make an application for the Sabado Tarday location. And then uh, it went to the B A R. Is it S Bar? Yeah. Um, and, and, and S Bar. Uh, said it was an inappropriate location and something else, and I thought, well, you know. Uh, I can't speak for Commissioner Bridley, but, you know, given that the time that I put into it and others. Uh, it, it seemed a little bit odd, given that I didn't see any B A R people at our, at our walkthrough, that the B A R would reject it. And we wind up looking at the exact same pole location, which makes our effort seem sort of like not worthwhile. And uh, and it raised issues in my mind of, what is the B A R's uh. Legitimate jurisdiction here, I didn't know it was involved in picking pole locations. Uh, especially when the planning commission had indicated we needed to pick something else, I told you this was a ramble. But it's, it's, I, I don't actually know what we're talking about on December sixth, are we going to look at more pole locations, I guess not. Or, or, or what are you going to look at? And if we do. Does it mean anything until the B A R gets it? Because I certainly don't want to be. Acting before B A R does and essentially ceding them final authority, which they got in this, in this particular process by rejecting Sabado Tarday. And we're back to this very pole location three years ago that we all had questions about. So that's a ramble, isn't it? Mr. Pettit shakes his head yes. Okay, uh, any comments, Mr. Sillards or anybody? Okay.
Mr. Chair, can, can I just add into that?
I, I'd love if you would.
Yeah, you got it totally right, and I loved um. Seeing you in action at that side visit in twenty-twenty. Um, I, because I think we both talked to some of the concerned citizens nearby, I, you summarized it correctly. And I think, believe that because this is an S B R, S B A R appeal, as well as a C D P appeal. That our authority would be the final action in terms of designer view, and so if the Sabado Tarday. Location is proposed by Verizon, staff will have to address that, notice that accordingly. Um, that is very much in play, as are some other locations, and from what I understand from the staff memo. Um, the continuance is being requested so that they can address additional community concerns, maybe it's some of those same alternative locations. Um, and so, I, I mean, I'd be in support of the continuance and. It may not be that we have the exact same location come back to us on December sixth, and that might mean that it is delayed further, we don't know. It's just the applicant's request to continue. So I'm okay with that.
So cranking me, I just want the last word on it, if we're going to put in the effort. And of course, the last word will be the board of supervisors, but I, I'm, I'm not really happy with the way this proceeded.
It, you know, it, it's actually quite complicated for, for a cellphone site, it, it, multiple appeals in the same. Uh, point at our commission, it, it, it's a little bit confusing, so.
Okay, well, then um.
So I would move to um.
Uh, hang on, we, we've got to do a couple of things first. Um, does, does the um. The applicant. Applicant respondent uh, want to appear. At this hearing. Going, going.
Um. We are okay with the continuance, this is Sarah Erickson, my father's on as well, and. We're okay with continuing.
Okay, and you're the, you're the appellant. Um, and thank you for, for telling us that, but do we have anything from the applicant, do they need to speak?
It looks like we have Mrs. Knight on, and her hand is raised, but Ms., Ms. Knight, um. You can go ahead.
Um, Tricia Knight, you um, should be able to speak. If you're having issues, you can dial star six to unmute.
Hello? Hello, hello?
This doesn't, this doesn't sound like Trisha, this is.
Oh, here I am. I managed to do this.
Dad. It, Trisha's gonna speak, we, we're, you can be yourself unmute, yeah. It appears that, um, Tricia Knight, um. You are. Ready to speak, so you.
Uh, clearly is. Uh. Do we have any members of the public, because we have to have public comment before we even have the, the continuance motion? Uh. Doesn't look like anybody's in the room, uh, is anybody on? Zoom or on the phone or some other media?
Chair Park, we do not have anybody with their hand raised to speak.
Okay, Ms. Knight, last chance, do you have anything to say here? Evidently not, and then Commissioner Bridley, I think you were about to make a motion for the continuance.
Yes, so I would actually move with Strauss's recommendation to um, continue the project cases. Number twenty-three A P L zero 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 two-four and zero 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 two-six, twenty-two D V P. Five zero 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 two-three and twenty-two C D P. Five zero 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 one four-six to December sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions carried, and this is continued to December sixth. So let's go on to our second item, would you read that into the record first, please, Ms. Castro?
Hearing on the request of Jill's um, Stace. Stacinos, Representative of the Concerned Carpertarians to consider case number twenty-three A P L. Zero 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 eight, an appeal of the Planning and Development Department Director's Approval Case Number. Nineteen C D P five zeros zero 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 forty-five. And to accept the cannabis line use ordinance and licensing program environmental impact report seventeen E I R. Five zeros zero 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 three, as adequate environmental, environmental review case number nineteen C D P. Five zeros zero 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 forty-five pursuant to section one-five-one-six-two. And one-five-one-six-eight of the California Environmental Act.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any ex-party visits or uh, ex-party? Contacts or site visits to report from the commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Bridley?
Uh, yeah, I had a site visit and discussion with the applicant's representative Eric Edwards on uh, Monday. And we just talked about the appeal and odor abatement plan.
Okay, and Commissioner Cooney, your. Your light is.
This is a hangover light, Mr. Chair, nothing new, I have visited the site, uh, as I disclosed at our first hearing.
Okay, and did you have anything to disclose, Commissioner Frini? And I had a telephone conference with Mr. Edwards last week. Okay, let's go on to the staff report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Kevin Del Santos, and I'm presenting the appeal of the four-nine-nine-four Foothill Road Cannabis Nursery Cultivation Project. The project was heard by your commission on July twenty-sixth of this year, the planning commission continued the item and directed staff to revise the conditions of approval to. Include carbon scrubber technology and discontinue the vapor phase system if it is not needed to abate odors. And add one additional year of odor abatement inspections for a total of two years. Staff drafted a memo that details the revised conditions of approval. Condition nineteen, the odor abatement implementation and monitoring condition has been revised to include two years of odor inspections. The condition has also been revised so that the inspections occur four times during the revised two-year period instead of quarterly due to the expense of each inspection. With implementation of the revised condition, the project would be subject to a total of five odor control system inspections. Consistent with other similar permitted cannabis operations, but over a two-year period. Condition twenty-one, the odor abatement plan revision condition has been added so that prior to issuance. The applicant is required to submit an O A P which incorporates greenhouse carbon scrubbers and ultimately eliminates the use. Of vapor phase if it's determined that vapor phase is no more, no longer needed to abate odors. The applicant would have a maximum. Excuse me, sorry, yep, the applicant would have a maximum of twelve months from project approval to implement the updated odor abatement plan, which incorporates carbon scrubbers. Staff recommends your commission take the following actions. Deny the appeal. Make the required findings for approval as specified in attachment aid to the staff report dated July twenty-sixth. Determine that the previously certified programmatic E I R is adequate. And approve the project subject to the revised conditions included as attachment B to the staff memo dated September fifth. This concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer questions, thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have questions, Mr. De La Santos? I, I do, uh, Mr. De La Santos, could you go back to the um. Uh, slide that had the condition of approval, the, the proposed new one? And I, I draw your attention to the. I guess I'd call it the third paragraph, when it starts the specific number of scrubbers, see that one? Um. What I'm wondering. Is uh. Is it conceivable that this could be interpreted to mean that an engineer could come in and say? Uh, well, the, the number is zero because it's a nursery and we don't need them. And then we're, we're back going in circles, and is, you, you can understand from my ramble on the first item, I'm, I don't like going in circles. And so I would hope this means there's going to be one or, or more, not. Zero or something else.
Chair, Chair and Commissioners, an option we could do on this is just say scrubbers shall be installed, and the number of those will be determined by the engineer. So that gets beyond the zero.
But isn't that what it says, or, or?
Well, if you want to be more like directive, and it'd be helpful for. Compliance, it would be um. Scrubbers shall be installed, so that's more than zero.
Got it.
And then the number is be determined by the engineer.
I got it. Well, I, I. I'd like something like that, but I'm sure it loo- looks like it's, it's a lot of staff paying attention, so if somebody has a comment also and answered my question. Ms. Beiler.
Um, yeah, Chair and Commissioners, I was just gonna say that. This is a, this condition we've applied to other projects also, we haven't had an issue where. An operator has tried to install zero scrubbers. I think in that situation, we would work with the operator to make sure that they were installing. And. Not zero, they, they were installing a number of scrubbers consistent with what we've seen on other sites. And what these O A Ps say, a lot of the O A Ps outline. Um, the number of scrubbers that would be, well, you know, like per acre. Um, so we would want to be consistent with what we've seen at other sites.
You know, not to be unduly argumentative, but uh, uh, I think it's worthwhile to compare. This project and what we do to other sites, but it's, it's also a, a unique site that we're talking about, just a nursery. And we're talking about one where it's uh. I think many people, let's say, let's put it that, would say it's unlikely that there'll be odors, and I think that's certainly been the. Position of, of the applicant, it's a reasonable position, and so uh. We can't automatically assume they do just what everybody else has done, and I'm, I'm not saying that the. Applicant is going to be unreasonable about it, I think an applicant could, could, could take that language and say, well. This engineer has said there doesn't need to be one now, you know, maybe in thirty years there'll be one if something else happens. And, and that might be a reasonable result, it's just that it would be uh, very distressing to the public. And, and, and it could undermine the credibility of the planning commission, and we're not thinking about these things ahead of time, so that's why I'm bringing it up. There you go. Do any of the other commissioners have concerns about the language here, I, I shouldn't hog the, the show? Uh, Commissioner Cooney?
I do, Mr. Chair, thank you, um. I had some written communication with Mr. De La Santos yesterday, uh, because I. Uh, found the language somewhat troubling in terms of timing of when things would happen, and the um. The first and foremost number is twelve months, which is uh, measured from project approval. So if we assume that the project is approved today. Uh, and twelve months go by, and the uh, project is uh, still. Uh, in operation, uh. Mr. De La Santos, Ms. Beiler, what would be the uh, consequence? Uh, how would we treat that as uh, as a county in terms of uh, solutions?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we would have to work with our compliance team, but if they did not. Install the scrubbers after twelve months, it would be a possibility that they could receive a notice of violation for being out of compliance with the condition of approval.
So, okay, that, that result doesn't uh, at least immediately um. Benefit the community if in fact uh, the odors we imagine could be emanating from the greenhouses are um. Are in effect, so um. I, I gather your answer, Mr. De La Santos says it was yesterday is. Uh, it's a compliance matter at that point, and uh, and the applicant would go through the compliance issues. But uh. Is there another alternative available to uh, the applicant to withdraw the um. Project at that point in order to avoid installing the scrubbers?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, no, there is no option for them to do that, and as a reminder, they, they are. Currently growing cannabis and utilizing a buyer's vapor phase odor abatement system right now.
Right, so um. One of the conditions that is unusual about this project is that uh. We have asked the applicant, or if this is adopted, we would ask the applicant to um. Abandon the buyer's uh, system altogether, and when would that occur? According to the um. Staff report.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that is, would be based off the revised odor abatement plan that the new engineer um, designs and submits to us. So we would not know until uh, they submit the revised odor abatement plan.
Okay, then I'll just.
Commissioner Cooney, I, so as written, this, this. Condition is requiring them to come back to us with an odor abatement plan, so we're, we're not able to speak toward the final details of what's going to be in that. But the condition is written that they have to commit to scrubbers. And then phase out the vapor phase, and so those details will be coming, but they probably won't be coming to the commission. Um, what this condition is doing is making them come back to staff. With that revised odor abatement plan that we will approve, and they are on the hook to implement those scrubbers within twelve. And they are on the hook to implement those scrubbers within 12 months. So I think those are the key components of what this condition is laying out.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Seawards, for that. But I guess that begs the question, when is it required that the applicant return with a revised odor abatement plan? Is that open?
It's open, other than the 12-month is there, that's our hook. I mean, everything's got to be done within 12 months. So the OAP needs to be revised and approved and the carbon scrubbers implemented within 12 months.
So there could be some risk to the applicant if they've waited 11 months, 11 and a half months to install the scrubbers and suddenly present an odor abatement plan?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm sure, Mr. Cooney, you have some ideas on what would be improved language, but I think that's something we'd all wait for in deliberations, that's your choice? Seems so. Okay. Any other questions on the staff report? And?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners-
Oh, yes. Secretary Wilson?
Just to help move this along faster, selfishly, I'm trying to be out at 11 for another meeting.
Okay.
If the commission is-
I'll give you three minutes. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna talk really fast. If the commission wants to make some adjustments or changes to the condition, we could do that now before we go into public comment and before deliberations. So that way, everybody's on the same playing field. There are, Ms. Baylor's correct, this is a standard condition we've been applying as more projects have been coming to the commission. If the commission desires at this time that they want a little bit more structured timing, we can do that. And what I mean by structured timing is if the commission says within 90 days, 180 days, we want to revise odor abatement plan in place, and then we can start pulling back that timeframe, that helps the compliance staff because now there's benchmarks that we're working towards and it's not just open-ended until 12 months. So we could pull that 12 months or put some benchmarks in to where we can measure progress towards transitioning away from vapor phase and into the carbon scrubbers. So that would be something the commission may consider as far as timing, if they wanted to put some timing in there in the condition to at least allow compliance staff to say, "Yes, we've met this benchmark."
Commissioner Cooney? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Wilson, you're following my line of thinking, at least, that we should insert some benchmarks to, for everybody to follow. And, you know, I remember the original projects where we allowed 12 months for installation and operation of the scrubbers in the greenhouses. And I don't know, I don't know if anyone knows when there was any preparation for that ahead of time. But I do see in this case that it would be helpful to everyone if we had an earlier than 12 months, maybe even earlier than six months, time for submission of the original odor abatement plan, allowing staff to make modifications and for the experts to indicate whether there are missing items. So I don't want to call the timeout, but I'd like to have the applicant address that issue when and if the applicant speaks and staff as well.
And Commissioner Riley?
I appreciate the line of thinking here. I'm probably not going to support that, depending on how the rest of the hearing goes, just because what I have heard from the community is that we need to be consistent in our approach. So now we've settled on carbon scrubbers and this is a condition that staff has said has been applied to other cases. I don't know that we have heard that people are coming up to their 12-month mark and not fulfilling it. So, you know, now we're being more anxious about having them show progress toward that 12-month period. And I'm just not sure, you know, if we keep on fussing with it, then we don't have a consistent policy or program. So I just have a little bit of reservation about changing it from what staff has proposed. So let's get through the rest of the hearing. I'm just throwing that out as a consideration.
Mr. Chair, just for those who are watching at home, I just wanted to just acknowledge that we, our last commissioner has arrived for the hearing.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Martinez. Good to see you.
Good morning.
I hope you prevailed in court.
Let's just say the judge prevailed with me.
You survived. You're walking. Okay. Well, it's a bit of a conundrum in that I appreciate what Secretary Wilson was suggesting, that we look at revisions of language now and then the appellant, the applicant in public could comment on that. And, you know, if we didn't do that and we proceeded with the rest of the hearing now and then changed the language during deliberations, I'd be looking at Mr. Pettit and saying, "Should we have more public comment because we've made substantial changes to the project?" And we may or may not. I don't know what we're gonna, you know, if we change a word or two and it's minor, we probably wouldn't have more comment. But if we do, then we reopen it. Commissioner Cooney, do you have an opinion right now as to where you'd like to go?
Well, I'm suggesting that as a matter of procedure, we take a brief recess. We're almost ready for one anyhow.
Yeah.
And allow staff to come back with their experience in other cases where the odor abatement plan has either been late or it's not a problem or otherwise advise the commission what we might put into our holdings that that make it better for everybody, including the public.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent suggestion. So we'll take a 10-minute break and I'd ask staff to work on any suggested revisions to that condition language that you might make based on what you've heard from the commissioners. And that way, the appellant and the applicant in public will have an opportunity to comment on that as well and we'll have a more streamlined procedure than having two sessions of public comment. Okay, we're on break. Thank you.
Okay. I give him a hard time.
Oh, my God.
It's the old, um. Did you know Bobby Karen was up here? Remember that whole fiasco? He was selling shares in in Croft.
Okay, let's go.
Soul Pinnacle Dome. It's the whole Pinnacle Dome thing again. Okay. And then some of these people are going out.
We're reconvening our September thirteen twenty twenty three hearing of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. And we're on item number two. Uh, we'd finished the uh uh, staff report. We had some questions and suggestions. Uh, we've had a break and now staff, I think, is going to return with some ideas on revised language. Am I right? Good. Mr. David Santos.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, uh, we're ready to present. Can we get the revised condition on the screen?
Thanks for being patient. We're just trying to get it on the screen, but we've um essentially updated the condition to um require the installation of scrubbers within to require the installation of scrubbers and require that the odor abatement plan be submitted within six months of project approval. And require the installation uh within twelve months. Using a little bit more firm language to um require that scrubbers be installed. Can't be zero.
So is this the PowerPoint version of the infamous blue screen of death or? So that's what these hearing room reconstructions are all about is audio visual. Okay. We'll see if it gets better or worse. Who wants to bet?
So. I'm sorry, our CSP TV staff has asked if we could just have a couple minute break. They're working through some technical issues.
Let's have a five minute break. We have um letters and underlines and whatnot on the screen. Can this be interpreted for us by staff?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you. Yes, shown on the screen is the revised odor abatement plan. Yeah, is the revised odor abatement plan revision condition with further revised language. Uh, you'll see in the second and third paragraph that language has been added and revised so that the scrubbers must be installed. There will be installation of scrubbers and then in the timing section, uh, we have added language so that the applicant must submit the revised odor payment plan within six months. Um, this order payment plan must still be approved by uh P and D. And again, the applicant will still have twelve months, more later than twelve months to install the scrubbers.
Is the whole item on this one page or do we need to scroll?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the whole item is uh shown on the page right now.
Well, I've looked for the red and and have read the red. Uh, it uh addresses the concerns I raised. Uh, Commissioner Cooney, have you had an opportunity to read it all and does it address the concerns you had?
It does. Um. Yeah, I I don't think it needs wordsmithing. It's the essence is to get a time certain for submission of the uh odor abatement plan and and this does it. Um, and I think it'll be helpful to to all, but let's hear what others say.
Yeah, let me ask other commissioners. Do you have uh anything you want to address now in this uh document in front of us, which is the um revised condition of approval? And and of course, you have the right to say whatever you want in deliberations. But if you have something now where you have something in mind, let's get it out there so that the applicant and the appellant in public can comment on it. Anyone? Okay, then let's move on to the appellants' presentation. I take it that's via Zoom, right? Who's speaking for the concerned carpentryans?
I am. Um, hi, yeah, please don't start the timer yet. I just I am trying to. Can you hear me first of all?
Yes.
Okay, and you can see the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, great. All right. Um, I'm go I'm Jill. I'm gonna start right now. All right.
Okay.
Good morning, Chairman. Oops, sorry.
Hold on.
Okay.
You're gonna have fifteen minutes total. Uh, I haven't heard from anyone else asking for anything different, so that's our standard thing. Total means for your opening presentation and rebuttal.
Okay, I might need an extra minute, but I will do my best.
Well, let's but let's discuss that now because I I like to I I I don't like to be I want to be listening. I don't want to be watching the clock and wondering what's going on with the presentation. So what's your best estimate of the length of your presentation that you reasonably need?
Okay, my best estimate would be sixteen minutes.
If we're gonna give you twenty total for the cumulative uh opening and rebuttal.
Yeah, I won't. I won't need that, but that's fine. Okay.
The Chair um and Commissioners, it's within your discretion, Chair, but I think we've already heard this item. So I I guess the question, no, I don't guess. The question for the opponent is, is this new information or is this related to the changes we made today? So I believe we've already heard this item at a prior commission. So we're the question is, do we need sixteen minutes for items that we've already heard? Or is this items related to the condition that we brought back?
Uh, I I think you're right. And it's a reasonable way to look at it. My experience with these matters, once we've continued them and we think we're coming back on a tentative decision to look at final findings and and the parties will address their substantive concerns all over again. Uh, and wherever that leads, sometimes it just leads to more time being consumed. Uh, but I think it's a fair question by Mr. Wilson, Ms. Distinos. Uh, uh, do you intend to address the um these revised condition of approval or do you have other issues you want to address? Are we we gonna start all over again in your mind?
Um, I'd say I I changed, I mean, I modified during your break some of the presentation, some of the PowerPoint presentation. It it is very similar to the previous presentation. So yes, a lot of it is addressing the same issues. However, it was modified, taking into consideration what transpired at the July twenty sixth hearing. So I mean, I can I think I can get it done in fifteen minutes, but I won't be talking fast.
I'm not worried about the fifteen. No, don't talk fast. Talk slow so everybody can understand you. And and you'll be more effective that way. I'm not trying to hurry you. The the cost of five minutes is is not a problem. If on the other hand, you were going to repeat everything you presented then and and the commission had already heard it and kind of gone in a certain direction, it it might be a waste of your time, but I I'm not going to censor you or tell you what to say. That's not my role. So why don't you just go ahead? And like I said, you got twenty minutes from start to finish, including rebuttal. That should give you plenty of time.
That will. All right.
All right, go ahead.
So do you want to tell me when to start?
Yes, I just did. So go. Green light.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Park and Commissioners. My name is Jill Stacinos, and I am representing Concerned Carpentryans in their appeal of the Medi Edibles Incorporated project located at forty nine ninety four Foothill Road in Carpinteria. As a resident of Carpinteria for more than thirty two years, someone who lives approximately one and a half miles from Carpinteria High School, a former teacher in the Carpinteria School District and a hiker on the Franklin Trail. This project has a direct impact on me, the students and staff at Carpinteria High School, the people who enjoy hiking on the Franklin Trail and the residents living within the vicinity of this project. Much of this presentation will seem familiar due to this appeal hearing having been continued from July twenty sixth. Please start the PowerPoint presentation.
We have. We're there.
Okay, great. Next. Okay, so here we go. No, go back one, please. So slide two, we should be on slide two right now.
We were, yep.
Okay, thank you. Concerned Carpentry and supports the planning commissioners revised conditions for approval of this project. We concur with the inclusion of regenerative carbon scrubber technology due to its being the best available odor control technology at this time. Also discontinuing the use of vapor phase ingredients if no longer needed for odor control is justified since the use of Eco Sorb and Benzaco are no longer considered the best available odor control technology. The applicant's assertion that nursery cannabis plants give off no smell is inaccurate. The applicant actually states in their OAP that cloned and vegetative cannabis plants do indeed give off some nuisance smell during the latter part of their growth cycle prior to being transported offsite. Thus, the need for internal greenhouse-purposed regenerative carbon scrubbers. Adding an additional year of quarterly inspections for a total of two years is a very reasonable condition for project approval when considering the proximity of Carpentry High School, the Franklin Trail and nearby residences. Quarterly inspections over a two-year period of time will help ensure that any mal odors are detected quickly and remediated. These quarterly inspections will also assist with the enforcement of no cannabis nursery plants being grown within the six hundred foot sensitive receptor setback greenhouse four. Red paint on the floor and eight inch by ten inch. And maybe they're ten inch by ten inch. We're not sure because this part wasn't updated. It says in the plan eight inch by ten inch signs. They are not sufficient. County oversight is required so that the public does not have to rely on the project operator's word that they will not grow cannabis plants within the six hundred foot setback. Next. This slide shows the five cannabis greenhouses that are located close to Carpinteria High School. It also notes the previous planning commissioners set a precedent by adding the condition for project approval at forty five thirty two Foothill Road that regenerative carbon scrubbers be installed within six months. So I did change that to six months. Forty seven oh one and forty five fifty five Foothill Road have already installed regenerative carbon scrubbers. Unfortunately, the appeal of a revised odor abatement plan for forty five oh five Foothill Road will not be heard due to the applicant withdrawing his application. Next. It is important to have the same standards for all of the greenhouses, especially those within a thousand feet of the high school. Despite this project's OAP having been written on December eighth, twenty twenty two, it incorrectly claims that the vapor phase system is currently the best available odor control technology. And on page seven of the OAP, it incorrectly states that regenerative carbon scrubber technology is still in its infancy and not yet commercially available. This project's OAP uses a May twenty eighteen presentation as a basis for its information. The best available odor control technology has changed substantially since twenty eighteen. The operator for this cannabis operation has voluntarily offered to use regenerative carbon scrubber technology in their thirty four fifty Viorial operation, which includes three nursery greenhouses. And it's including these three nursery greenhouses. So why isn't he volunteering to use regenerative carbon scrubbers in the nursery greenhouses at forty nine ninety four Foothill Road? At the appeal hearings for fifty nine eighty and sixty thirty Casitas Pass Road, the planning commission also recommended that carbon, that regenerative carbon scrubbers be installed. Actually, you recommended for twelve months. I changed this because it's for twelve months. That's what you recommended, but now you're changing it to six months, which we do appreciate and we support. Next. The use of Bayer's Eco Sorb and or Benzaco vapor phase systems emit emit other chemicals into the air that have caused many residents to experience health concerns such as allergic reactions. Due to large quantity of Eco Sorb Benzaco being used by approximately twelve sites on a daily basis and the amount of time it takes for Eco Sorb Benzaco to degrade, it is troubling that MediEdibles operator continues to use Benzaco at his cannabis operation at forty nine ninety four Foothill Road and at fifty nine eighty Casitas Pass Road. This project's operator uses the same odor complaint contact phone number for both forty nine ninety four Foothill Road and fifty nine eighty Casitas Pass Road. Residents in the business next door to fifty nine eighty Casitas Pass Road have called the odor complaint contacts phone number about the intolerable cannabis smell, but have not gotten any relief. Vapor phase odor control systems cause an increase in the total emissions going into the atmosphere as compared to carbon scrubbers which reduce the total emissions going into the atmosphere. A study completed in November twenty twenty two by SCS engineers demonstrated the effectiveness of regenerative carbon scrubbers at controlling odor in a vented Carpinteria greenhouse. This study also highlighted the superiority of regenerative carbon scrubbers which filter odorous constituents inside the greenhouse as a compared to vapor phase systems that rely on chemical reactions. As compared to vapor phase systems that rely on chemical reactions occurring outside. The greenhouses after the odors have escaped. Next. Cannabis farms near high schools present several risks and drawbacks, including increased exposure to illegal drugs. And a perception of acceptance of a local drug culture. Both the planning commission and the superintendent of Carpinteria School District. Requested a distance of a thousand feet from the property line of cannabis sites to the high school's property lines. According to the Santa Barbara Grand Jury's twenty-twenty report. Carpinteria High School is located within a thousand feet of this project's cannabis greenhouses. It is important to protect the students and staff at Carpinteria High School. From the cannabis odor and or the use of neutralizing masking agents. Which can harm lungs and brains. No student or staff member should have to suffer any ill effects. When there is better odor control technology available to protect everyone. The county needs to make sure that odors aren't being experienced at sensitive receptors like schools, as well as in residential areas. Next. Greenhouse one is the brown area behind the trees with no roofs. Nothing is currently being grown in greenhouse one. Since greenhouse one will need to be repaired, the owner will need to install a new odor abatement system. So it makes sense at this time to install regenerative carbon scrubbers as the best available odor control technology. Next. This slide shows the layout of the cannabis project at forty-nine ninety-four Foothill Road. The greenhouses are labeled in red and the circle in red indicates the area where the water retention basin is to be built. Greenhouse one has no roof and is located directly behind the proposed water retention basin. Most of greenhouse three is closer than seven hundred and fifty feet to Carpinteria High School's property line. And the majority of greenhouse four is within six hundred feet of the high school's property line. Five thousand nine hundred seventy square feet of greenhouse four. Which is approximately the same size as three two thousand square foot, three bedroom, two bath homes. Is just over six hundred feet from the high school's property line. And is therefore allowed to grow cannabis nursery plants. While an area of five thousand nine hundred seventy square feet of cannabis plants. Seems small in comparison to the overall size of greenhouse fours, fifty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-two square feet. It's slightly more than six hundred foot proximity to the high school is concerning. Next. This photo is from Plan A zero period eleven. The two dash lines show where the six hundred foot and seven hundred foot distance is from the high school's property line. The four dotted long rectangular areas in greenhouse three. Indicate where the cloned plants will be for three to four weeks. We have not received a response from the applicant regarding where the mother plants and vegetative plants will be grown. Vegetative cannabis plants require an additional grow time of four to five weeks. Therefore, Concerned Carpentry-ians are wondering where the nine-week-old vegetative plants will be transported. For their further cultivation. We are hoping it will not be four-five oh five Foothill Road. This plan only includes one floor to ceiling wall outlined above in red, separating greenhouse three and four. The highlighted blue line shows where a chain link fence required by the fire department will be installed. The planner said there is also another floor to ceiling wall in greenhouse four as shown on page five of his presentation. But it is not on the plan as presented. Unless the second floor to ceiling wall is shown on the plans. We believe that having only red paint on the floor indicated above, above in green. And hanging eight inch by ten inch signs every twenty feet. To separate the cultivation of cannabis in greenhouse four. From the six hundred foot sensitive receptor setback in greenhouse four is not adequate. Next. This aerial photo shows the Franklin hiking trail outlined in white. Please note, the straight part of this trail is located right next to this project site. On Saturday, July fifteenth, around ten AM, while hiking on this part of the trail, the Franklin Trail, I noticed a strange odor. And it was very strong, that's why I noticed it. No one hiking on this trail should have to smell either cannabis odors or the vapors from the neutralizing masking agents. Used by this project's cannabis nursery. Next. I took this photo on my Saturday, July fifteenth hike to show the enormous size of this project. In contrast to the size of the two hikers. I noticed approximately twenty other hikers who walked past me during my hour-long hike on this popular trail. Next. Enforcement is an ongoing concern, which is why Concerned Carpentry and Support the Planning Commission's revised condition. To increase the number of years from one to two for quarterly odor abatement inspections. Quarterly inspections are necessary because even though GeoSynTech was hired to help with odor problems. Cannabis operators continue to get their business licenses renewed. Even when their greenhouses continue to receive odor complaints from residential zones. Hopefully, these quarterly inspections will ensure that the students and staff at Carpinteria High School. And hikers on the Franklin Trail won't be negatively affected by mal odors. Due to the cannabis plants and or neutralizing masking agents from this project's cannabis nursery. We support the planning commission's revised condition to install the best available odor control technology. This project's applicant agreed to observe a set of community odor guidelines developed collaboratively. Between the Cannabis Association for Responsible Producers and the Coalition for Responsible Cannabis. He signed the agreement in August twenty-twenty-one to install the best available odor control technology. However, the OAP for this project does not use the best available odor control technology. Which currently is internal greenhouse-purposed regenerative carbon scrubbers. Earlier this month, the Coalition for Responsible Cannabis filed a lawsuit against the carp growers. Who signed the agreement but have not installed the best available odor control technology. It is our hope that all cannabis growers in Carpinteria will eventually be good neighbors. By using the best available odor control technology. Next. This slide shows the signature of Tristan Strauss, CEO of Medi Edibles Incorporated on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. On the contract between the Carpinteria growers and the coalition.
I'm going to interrupt you for a moment, Ms. Distinos. I understand the bigger picture here that you're addressing. I'm not really sure you need to address it today, right here, right now, where we're eager to. Deal with this specific project in front of us in specific language. Um, I mean, I, I have seen that agreement many times.
Right.
The other commissioners have as well. And we're, we're not here to argue about what the issues are in the lawsuit or really anything else, so. I, I hope you take that to heart. In deciding how to use your remaining time or whether you want to take it all now, because you'll. You'll go on with this and you won't have any time for rebuttal when we get to talking about the issue that's actually in front of us.
Well, thank you. Just so you know, the next slide is my last slide. It's my.
Oh, great. Thank you.
So, um, so again, Mr. Strauss's signature is from the top, next to a photo of the first page of the contract. Between carp growers and the coalition. Next slide. In conclusion, the agreement between the carp growers and the coalition states that each grower shall promptly update their OAPs. To include and implement such new best available odor control technologies. However, it appears that Mr. Strauss is not abiding by the contract. Thus, Concerned Carpentry-ians supports the odor abatement revision. For an updated OAP that utilizes internal greenhouse-purposed regenerative carbon scrubbers. Within twelve months, and actually now you're changing it to six months, which is, we support that. We note that the planning commission has previously added this condition of twelve months to the last three appeals. When the applicant tenant already changed their OAPs prior to their hearings before the commission, thereby setting a precedent. It is of the utmost importance to us that the revised odor abatement system be installed prior. To the commencement of cannabis cultivation activities. Concerned Carpentry-ians support the increase from one to two years of quarterly inspections. Due to concerns regarding enforcement of the OAP and protection of students and staff. At Carpinteria High School from mal odors emanating from cannabis odors and or odor neutralizing masking agents. We propose that a permanent floor to ceiling wall be constructed. To separate the cannabis grow area from the non-cannabis grow area in greenhouse four. It is not adequate to have a red painted line on the floor and eight inch by ten inch signs. Hanging every twenty feet to separate the two areas. If two floor to ceiling walls in greenhouse four already exist, then the applicant's plan needs to be updated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Edwards, will you come up to the podium? And now that I've given twenty minutes to the appellant, and they used most of it. Then you have the same right, but I, I hope you don't exercise your right to take that whole twenty minutes.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Um, I hope not. Uh, I'll be, I'll be fairly quick. Um. Unfortunately, during the last hearing, we didn't, uh, get to actually, or our side didn't actually get to deliberate. On the, uh, requirement to add scrubbers, but we're not in opposition to that. Um, we'd be happy to decommission the buyer system. And we'd be happy to do so, um, ASAP. So, uh, we're on board with that. Um, we're on board with. Uh, all of staff's recommendations. Um. I, I am slightly confused about the more rigorous, um, odor, uh, odor abatement condition being imposed on this project. As to other projects. Um, we're, we're here today in part because the planning commission. Uh, wanted consistency in their application of, of these conditions across the board. Um, in fact, uh, the appellant's argument said that, um, in their opening statement that. Uh, consistent standards were, was one of their primary goals. Um, so I just find it a bit perplexing that, that this project, uh, which generates no odor. Is, is given, uh, more rigorous, uh, conditions of approval than other projects which create. You know, which have the potential to create substantial odors, um, notwithstanding, um, the odor abatement technologies. Um, so I, I, I find that strange. I find that a bit unfortunate. I think that sort of detracts a bit from, from the consistency. Consistency that, that the commission itself is trying to set across the board. Um, but not, notwithstanding that. As the condition appeared before staff's changes, which we're okay with, we'll, we'll, we'll agree to them, um, so that we can, uh, move on. Um, but, uh, just, just to highlight that. The original condition required us to submit an OAP, uh, a revised OAP prior to issuance. Um, issuance is important because, um, we need issuance before we can obtain our business license. Um, we need our business license before we can move, uh, ahead at the state level into transition to annual licenses. Um, so there's just no way that if we wanted the project to, to move forward, that we could delay. Um, that's why we're happy with the revised conditions, um, or the revised language, I should say. Um, it, it, it really makes no impact to us as we were intending to do that anyways. And our goal would be to decommission the buyer's machine as soon as possible and replace it with, um. The recommended number of carbon scrubbers. And so with that, um, I don't have much more. I'm, I'm here to answer questions. Should the commission have them? Um, I think everything, uh, was addressed, um, during the last hearing. Um, and, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And Mr. Cooney has a question, and so does Mr. Martinez. Oh, no. And I have a brief question, but let me have Mr. Cooney go first. Mr. Edwards, I just want to be sure, uh, we're understanding what you're saying is not, uh, or is more intense than. Than you believed, uh, was necessary and is certainly, uh, less than has been required of other. Growers around the area. Um, is it something that, uh. Has to do with the timing of these items like the presentation of the, uh, odor abatement plan? Because at least that was my main concern. Uh, is there anything else?
Two things just off, off the bat, the timing, which I said is, is, is really a moot issue. We, we have to do it anyways. We have to move forward anyway, so it, it's fine. Um, the two years of odor monitoring, I find, um, while the staff was able to, to, uh. While we were able to work with staff to, to make it quarterly so that we're not, um, economically disadvantaged. Um, as, as it pertains to other projects, I just find it strange that, um, we're going to be monitored for two years on a facility. That has zero odor, um, when other cannabis operations that produce odor are, um. Are only required to do this for a single year. Um, again, economically, it doesn't matter. For us, it doesn't matter. There's no odor. We're happy to have the county out there at any time. Um, we're happy to have the commission out at any time to, to see the project. There, 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 there's, there's no odor. So it's just, um, again, i- if, if our goal is consistency, um, it seems that we're being inconsistent. On a project, um, that doesn't warrant such inconsistency, um, from our perspective. And, and, and that's primarily it. I mean, uh, again, we're happy to, to move forward. We're happy, um, to, 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 uh. To accept the additional condition language, including the odor monitoring. I just, um. Wanted the time to, uh, at least publicly state that, that, um. Again, we're here because of inconsistency. I mean, uh, our position at the original hearing was that there's no odor and that this appeal. Um, for, by and large, is, is related to odor and, um, is, is sort of unnecessary. And instead of that being the direction, the direction was, well, we have to be consistent. We have to apply carbon scrubbers to this project because we've applied that to every other project. It doesn't matter if there's no odor. Okay, um, so we're going to be consistent, but now that's not enough. Now we have to add additional timing to it. Um, we have to add additional, uh, add an additional year of odor inspections. Um, and it just attracts from, from, uh, being consistent among operators. And again, we feel it's unnecessary, um, especially given this project is, is nursery only. There is no mature plant cultivation. No odor. Um, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, just for myself, I appreciate, uh, your attitude toward the, uh, changes. Because I think you might stand as a positive example for those that are growing throughout the valley and are. Either dragging their feet or at least delaying till the last minute so that, uh. You know, they can continue to produce with, without the best available technology. And you haven't, uh, suggested that in any way. Uh, so, uh, you know, I, I'm not worried about adding conditions that you're already going to comply with. Uh, better to have that than not have them at all. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Riley?
I, I do have a question for Mr. Edwards, and it was, uh, helpful when I went to the site visit because I concur that. The odors are practically insignificant. Um, there is another component. And I know that staff has done a really good job of making sure that we know where our, uh, or P and D's authority ends. And the business license program begins, but one of my concerns at the first hearing was. Okay, so we, we approve this and you've got the wall and you've got these signs and everything, but. At what point can you just put in full, full flowering plants and who's going to catch that? And you reminded me that the business license program, we've got planning and development, permit compliance, that's one thing on your CDP. But then you've got the business license program that, oh, goes out there and monitors it. So can you just put that on the record? Because that, that relieved me a lot in terms of having something that is physically. Um, a little bit limited in terms of, because of the kinds of plants you're growing. And that guarantee, um, you know, made me a little more comfortable. So can you explain that?
Yeah, so in addition to sort of P and D's role in this, um, the business license, um, which, which. The business license process does involve, um, lots of inspections by almost every county department that's required to, to sign off. So we have the ag department and the sheriff's department, um, and we have planning and development out. Often more than one time, um, especially as we're gearing up for renewals. Um, there's, there's very little time that goes by where I'm not at an inspection with some county, uh, department. On, on one of our operations and, and granted, we have a few, so, um, it's to be expected that it's regular. But the idea that, um, we could somehow, uh, slip in, um, flowering plants. And, and have them grow full term and just produce odor there, um. Is, huh, from, from our perspective, it's, 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 um. Uh, the, the words escaping me, but it, it seems unfair. Um, we have lots of operations that are, that are going. Uh, we have not only the county inspections, but we have state inspections that, that happen. Um, and, uh, it would just be, uh, terrible business strategy. To jeopardize our ability to obtain licenses by going outside of, of the confines. Of our entitlements and our state licenses. And, um, it, you know, if, if the state were to catch us doing that. It would potentially jeopardize our ability to renew any of our licenses across all of our projects. And, um, we just have no interest in doing that. In fact, we're, we voluntarily, um. Converted this when, when, when. when our group took over this project, we voluntarily converted from mixed light to nursery to avoid any kind of adverse effects, primarily due to odor next to the high school. And so the fact that we would voluntarily do that and then stand before you all and commit to that and then immediately go back and change that in secret is just. Yeah, I mean, I think you get the point.
Well, yeah, thank you. I mean, the point is just to remind us that there are a lot of inspections that you face. And so it helped me understand that when we met yesterday, so.
Correct, yeah.
Or Monday. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, well, if something else comes up, you'll have opportunity for rebuttal, but I thank you for your comments. And let's go on to public comment. I don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone online or on the phone just going to make public comment?
Chair Park, we do have Anna Correo online.
Okay, are there any others?
We have one other. If you do wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand.
Okay, well, let's start with Ms. Correo. Ms. Correo, I want to go ahead and remember three minutes.
Okay, I'll try and keep it short.
Just keep it under three minutes.
I know. Okay.
And if you can focus on what the commission's focusing on, that is the revised condition of approval.
Yes, I appreciate the revised condition of approval very much. So I do want to just point out at forty-five thirty-two, which is the only, which is one of three where you put in the condition about the twelve months. They still, that from that appeal appearing, which was June first of twenty twenty-two, they still do not have their revised OAP approved. I wrote to the planner last week asking for the location. I've seen the new revised OAP, but it doesn't show. So that's a year after that was, they submitted a new OAP, May twenty-sixth. So just wanted to let you know. I'm going to read the letter from the Coalition for Responsible Cannabis.
Wait a minute, is the letter already in the public record?
I don't know if.
Yeah, is this a letter from Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Okay, then you're not going to read the letter. It's already there. There's no reason to read something that's already in the record.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you. Then, I mean, normally I do. So, okay, so, all right. So the other concern then is about the wall. I don't see. We've asked the planner and the planner again wrote me this morning. He still has not received an updated page of that plan, this AO eleven showing where supposedly there's a second wall. Because there's a wall separating, so Jill Tassinos brought it up. There's a wall, a permanent floor to ceiling wall separating greenhouse three and four. And then there's five thousand plus square feet of greenhouse that in greenhouse four. Kevin has told us that when he went, he saw a second wall behind the fence that they're going to be putting in. But we don't see it in the plan. So we have concerns about, and that's what we would like addressed, and it's not being addressed. If there is a wall, great, but have it shown in the plan so we know it's there. That's that question. Let's see, sorry. Okay, and then, okay, so. Okay, well, we like the new language. That's wonderful about the new language. And Chairman Bridley is the one who asked about, at the last commission hearing, asked about extending the inspections from the county to a two-year period in the memo, and this is what Eric Erickson was speaking about. They came up with a compromise that it would be twice a year in the first year and twice biannually in the second year. So we had questions about, you know, what the commission would decide. We, of course, like the idea of the inspections as much as, you know, possible. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. Then our public comment is complete, it appears. So does the appellant have any, see any need for rebuttal?
Chair Park, we do have one other speaker, Paul Extorm.
Where do you have this other speaker?
On Zoom. He has lowered his hand. Apologize.
He's lowered his hand, so back to the question, public comments done. Do you see any need, Ms. Tassinos, for rebuttal? You have about three minutes for it.
Okay. I'd like to address the applicant's no odor assertion because I smelled a strong odor when hiking on the Franklin Trail. No malodor complaints could be due to people not knowing who to contact. We do need an updated project OAP, and we need to know if there truly is two walls in there. Otherwise, I would suggest that they build a floor to ceiling wall in the green area that we outlined, where they're thinking, where they're planning on putting the red paint and the signs, hanging the signs. And that would just make the whole project more amenable to us. So otherwise, we do support, Concerned Carpentreans do support the language changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tassinos. Mr. Edwards, do you see any need for rebuttal? And Mr. Edwards, for the record, is shaking his head. Not nodding his head, shaking his head. So he means no, there is no need for rebuttal. The public hearing is closed. We're going to move on to any questions of staff or any comments from staff they feel need to supply at this point. And they're also shaking their heads for the record. So, and so are all the commissioners. So we're now going to move on to deliberations. And we'll start with Mr. Cooney because it's his district. Unless you wanted to hear from everybody else first.
I was just going to say so, Mr. Chair. This is.
Waste it all this time.
Oops, we have a lag there. I'll just proceed as best I can.
Thank you.
I think we have taken action tentatively to improve the assurance to the public and to the high school that everything is going to be done within certain times that staff can monitor and will monitor. And even though there is substantial assurance that these plants grown in this project are not capable of producing malodor in the event that there is some odor. It's going to be dealt with in the best way we can imagine and with the best available technology. So I'm prepared to support the project, but open to the comments of my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Do we have comments by the other commissioners? No one has raised their hand. And I well, I'll make a comment, so somebody does. Commissioner Cooney, I think you've made an extra effort to carefully review these documents and what you've heard from the various parties, separating the wheat from the chaff, so to speak. And it appears that we have a revised condition of approval that meets your approval, and I will join in that. So if you make a motion to approve this subject to the revised condition of approval, I will certainly support it.
If we could put the recommended action on the screen, if that's easily done, otherwise I'll try and read it. Looks good to me. So my motion is to deny the appeal case number twenty-three APL zero 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 eight. Make the required findings for approval of the project specified in attachment aid at the staff report dated July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Determine that the previously certified programmatic EIR seventeen EIR three is adequate pursuant to sequel guidelines, sections fifteen one sixty-two and fifteen one sixty-eight C, included as attachment A to the staff memo dated September five, twenty twenty-three, and approve the project case number nineteen CDP zeros forty-five. Subject to the revised conditions included as attachment B to the staff memo dated September five, twenty twenty-three, and as further revised in the hearing today.
That's Commissioner Cooney's motion. Do we have a second? Okay, now that we have a motion before us, do any of the commissioners have any further comments in our deliberations? Okay, then let's go ahead and vote. Well, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right? Are there any nos? There are no nos, and so the motion is carried. Do we have any other business on this matter today? I'm going to express my gratitude to both sides. Experience I've had in the courtroom and here, we often hear things from each side that the other side says, oh, that's not really true. I want to contest that. I want to contest this. But you can't contest anything. You kind of have to look at the ultimate result, and we got to an ultimate result with the help of both sides that I think was a reasonable accommodation. And I appreciate your effort to do that. It's a difficult journey in finding exactly the right thing to do and having parties that are willing to participate in the drafting process and all that is extremely helpful. So thank you. Okay, we have no further business on this matter. We have nothing else before us today, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.